It's my source for everything.
Yeah, I'm not sure. It's right around, I'm gonna be at my, yeah, the weekend before, I have a wedding down, my niece's wedding down in North Carolina, so I'm gonna be gone for four days, so I have to really decide if I want to give up another day.
I hear you.
I would, if I didn't have that, I would.
Good evening. Good evening. Can you hear me? You can, okay. I am speaking right into it. Okay. I feel like you can't hear me tonight. Good evening and welcome to the regular town council meeting of August 20th, 2018. Deputy Mayor, would you please lead us in the pledge?
If we're allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in your wisdom, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the town clerk please take attendance?
Counselor Breiden?
Here.
Counselor Forrest?
Here.
Counselor Hurley?
Here.
Uh, Counselor Olatina is not here. Counselor Martino?
Here.
Here.
Counselor Ralph?
Here.
Counselor Spanella?
Here.
Deputy Mayor, Mayor Martino?
Yeah. You were a lesser.
But you said Martin.
Here.
Dolores, I think you might have missed me, but that's okay. It's been a couple of weeks since we've all seen each other.
I moved to the county lesser is here.
I'll go home if you want.
Okay. This is, this meeting's off to a good start. Alrighty. Wow. The first item on the agenda is a proclamation for the Great Meadows Conservation Trust's 50th anniversary. So if the members would like to come up and join me? Okay. So I'll read the proclamation first and then ask for some comments. The Great Meadows Conservation Trust was incorporated in 1968 by concerned citizens of Glassenberry, Rocky Hill, and Weathersfield as a nonprofit tax-exempt land trust to protect and preserve the great meadows of the Connecticut River Valley. The trust's purpose is to save the floodplains, vital agricultural scenic, archaeological, and wetland resources, and to work with like-minded groups and landowners in achieving this goal. Whereas, the mission of the Great Meadows Conservation Trust is to promote for the benefit of the general public, the preservation of the great meadows, and whereas, this includes preservation of the rural landscape, the floodplain, water resources, marshland, swamps, woodland, farmland, open space, unique historic and scenic sites. And whereas, these lands not only produce agricultural crops, but also provide diverse habitat for birds and animal life therein. Whereas, the Audubon, Connecticut has recognized the farmland and floodplain forests of the Great Meadows, a landscape-level important bird area, IBA, and whereas, these riverine lands provide scenic viewscapes, passive recreation opportunities for the public. And whereas, the Great Meadows Conservation Trust, Inc., is overseen by a board of directors that have, that has always included Weathersfield residents. Now therefore, on behalf of the town council, I, Amy Morn Bellow, Mayor of the town of Weathersfield, do hereby acknowledge the Great Meadows Conservation Trust, Inc., on its 50th anniversary. Weathersfield is grateful to the trust for its dedicated work preserving the invaluable ecological assets of the great meadows, Weathersfield's eastern border from the Weathersfield Cove in the north to the meadowlands of Rocky Hill in the south. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the town of Weathersfield to be fixed this 20th day of August, 2018. And I'd like to thank all of you. Hello, thank you. And thank you for all of your continued support for our beautiful open space down in the meadows. Oh, okay. Sure, and then you can make some comments.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mayor Warren, uh, Moore. This is, I'm Jim Woodworth, 33 Mill Street, and I'm the past president of the trust. And so I'd like to speak first and accept this proclamation on behalf of the hundreds of members over the 50 years, but in particular, the giants that we consider ourselves standing on the shoulders of, which would include Eleanor Buck Wolf and Joe Hickey, the two founding members who got together in 1966 or something, said, "We should do something." And by 1968, they incorporated the trust in the backyard of Eleanor Buck Wolf's house on, looking out on the great meadow, on the Weathersfield Cove. And we're happy to, well, and you all, many of you remember Eleanor Wolf because she was active in town affairs until 94, when she passed away, and, and Joe Hickey, who is still a board member, and unfortunately not with us today, but is with the, is still a director of the trust and active not only in the trust, but in town boards and commissions. There's hardly one that he hasn't been a member of. And I would like to just say that among the things that the trust did was to sort of put the nail in the coffin of the racetrack proposal that would have put a dike around half of the Weathersfield Meadows and turned the Crow Point Cove into a marina. And I, I put a newsletter on your desk, and you might just look at page three, that has a little bit of a history of the, of Crow Point Cove, and, which is just, nature has transformed it into a wonderful natural place, and the farmland that 60 years later is still being farmed, is producing Anderson corn, Fairweather Acres beans, not to mention Whitingbrook Turf Farm turf, as well as hay. And so, anyway, we're so grateful and we're so proud to be part of this organization. And I think our treasurer, Rick Doran, would like to say a couple of words.
Thank you, Jim. Rick Doran, 223 Main Street. I'm the current treasurer of the Great Meadows Land Trust and past president as well. It's my pleasure to acknowledge the land trust in its 50th anniversary, and I note a couple of things of great import. We try to partner with like-minded people, individuals, groups, municipalities in the state, and I want to thank the town of Weathersfield for being our partner from time to time and giving us insight and guidance and counsel in an effort to acquire some parcels principally and importantly in the agricultural zone along Elm Street. Most recently, that was a good partnership between the town and the land trust. Additionally, I, I look at each and every one of you and thank you, you, for your individual participation. I note that oftentimes you've been standing shoulder to shoulder with us at the Source to the Sea Cleanup, as well as our Earth Day Celebration at the Wood Parcel. Many of you were present for that event this year. And I thank you for being our partners, because it is a partnership that is important to the town as a whole, as we look at the environment and nature, and, and I know some of you have even brought your children to these events to introduce them to the environment and the value of preservation. Finally, in closing, I want to state that the Great Meadows Land Trust in 50 years has accomplished a significant feat, and that is, we have either owned or we have under conservation easement here in Weathersfield, over 23 parcels totaling 100, almost 120 acres of land in the great meadows. And the principal effort is to preserve the land for agriculture. Agriculture so the farmers can continue to grow our food at a local and sustainable area and level. So thank you to the town for being our partners and for acknowledging us and recognizing the 50 years of preservation of the Great Meadows Conservation Trust. Thank you.
Thanks. And we'll give a quick plug. The Source to Sea Cleanup is September 29th at 8:00 a.m. at the Weathersfield Cove.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item of business is the hearing. We have one hearing on an ordinance amending Chapter 10 of the Weathersfield Harbor Management Commission. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on that ordinance? Is there anybody who'd like to speak on that ordinance? Okay. Seeing no one in the audience to speak on it, I will declare the hearing closed. Now we'll move into general comments. We'll start with public comments. A member of the public can come up and speak for five minutes. If you would please give your name and address for the record, we'd appreciate it. Is there anybody who would like to speak on any matter? Okay, come on up.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Regan-Lefebvre of 19 Willard Street. It's come to my attention that there are some ideas floating around about adding solar panels to many town-operated buildings, and I wanted to express my incredible support for this idea, and I'd also encourage all of you to go even further and to incentivize new and existing businesses in town to convert their buildings to solar as well. As a resident, I have solar panels on my own house. They are fabulous. I have had them for about three years. I now pay the company that owns the panels about half for my usage. So about half of the usage for my house comes from solar and the rest comes from standard ever-source. Now, it varies by month, but for example, in July, I paid $2 in electricity to ever-source. So in the summer months, something like 98% of my energy for my house is coming from solar. It's a little bit different in January, not because we don't have good sun, but because we don't have as long days. People ask me all the time, "Well, are you saving money from it?" The point is, my roof was just sitting there, having sun beamed on it all day and doing absolutely nothing, and now it's providing half of the energy for me and my family. And when it comes to the town, we have to realize this attitude of, "Well, it's gonna cost some money, you know, to put out the panels, or maybe to give some kind of tax break to businesses that put panels up," that is penny-wise, pound foolish. The real cost of not moving away from sources like natural gas, coal even, the real cost is going to be felt by the town in my lifetime and in my children's lifetime. It's going to be more extreme weather caused by climate change. We will absolutely feel that firsthand in town. It's gonna be a lot more road repair. It's going to mean a lot more snow removal and branch removal. So it's not a case of like, "Well, can we afford this now?" How can we not afford to do this for those of us who are gonna live in this town perhaps for 30, 40, 50 years? So I'd really urge you to take this matter seriously. We know that climate change is real. There are scientists in this room who will back me up on that. This is a small step that Weathersfield can take to make our town more sustainable. We have been here since the 1630s, not all of us. But Weathersfield has, how can we keep going for another few hundred years? It's really gotta be about embracing the technology that's available to make us a healthier, more sustainable community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak? Come on up.
My name is Jerry Hayes. I live at 139 Broad Street. In March, the town council passed a resolution banning the storage of fracking waste in Weathersfield. While I'm generally in favor of the resolution, I am concerned that there was a disconnect when this decision was made. Our town uses natural gas to heat our homes and town buildings. What is our town government doing to reduce its consumption of natural gas in town facilities? It seems we want the product, but we want the harmful byproduct to go somewhere else. We also electrify our town buildings. According to ISO New England, over 60% of the northeastern U.S. electrical generation is through the burning of natural gas. Has our town government put up any solar PV systems on any of our buildings to reduce our use of natural gas-sourced electricity? It would seem logical to do so if we see storing fracking waste as being undesirable. For three years, I served on the Weathersfield Citizens Energy Advisory Committee with Matt Forrest. During that time, our town had accumulated enough points in the Clean Energy Community Program to qualify for a free three-kilowatt solar PV system. It was never approved, as our town's management apparently was not even interested in a small free system or the availability of getting 50% Connecticut Green Bank funding to expand that system to a 10-kilowatt system. Since that committee has been dissolved, I have occasionally attended meetings of the West Hartford Clean Energy Commission. The difference in attitude toward energy efficiency between our two towns is striking. West Hartford still promotes the state's Home Energy Solutions Program at town events and encourages businesses to take advantage of the Small Business Energy Advantage Program. They recently constructed the new Charter Oak School that met LEED gold standard and have purchased their streetlights, saving significant energy costs, and they are well along in converting their, all of their town streetlights to LED lighting. Also, West Hartford has installed solar PV systems on various town facilities that are rated at a total of 977 kilowatts. Neighboring towns such as Rocky Hill, Cromwell, and Glassenberry have also made significant progress in installing solar PV systems. Locally, last year, the Weathersfield United Methodist Church had a 75-kilowatt solar PV system installed. This system produces the equivalent of 95% of the electricity that our church uses. Our church members like the savings that this system provides and the knowledge that we are reducing our use of fossil fuels. I am concerned, however, that our church system is probably the largest one in a community that understands the issues with fracking and its toxic waste, but does not appear to be interested in generating electricity from solar PV systems to reduce the burning of natural gas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lynn O'Fory. I live at 43 Boardman Terrace in the Weathersfield housing property. I'm here to support the interest of solar panels on the town buildings. The housing authority has put in, I believe it's five, buildings have solar panels to offset the office electricity, and many residents are very interested in when there will be panels on their roofs to offset the tenants' electricity. And I think that in this day and age, as the previous commentators have said, renewable is the future. We know all the drawbacks of fossil fuels, and if there's any incentives or rebates to take advantage of, I think it's a win-win solution across the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak tonight? Come on up.
Hi, Kristi Salters-Pedno, 15 Fairmont Street. I've been so pleased with the town council's attention to forward-thinking solutions about energy efficiency and the environment. I was really pleased about the fracking waste ban. I'm really excited about the potential farm purchase. I know this is not the hearing for that, but I'm, I'm really looking forward to talking about all of the benefits of that purchase. But I wanted to get up today and talk a little bit about supporting solar on town buildings. And, you know, we all know about the, the dire warnings related to climate change. Right now, scientists are giving us a 50-50 shot of living into the 22nd century. And that's scary for someone who has young children who will be alive at that time. But I'm gonna talk just about the fiscal, the fiscal implications of solar. Right now, and the most recent analyses show that renewable energy will be cheaper than fossil fuels reliably starting in 2020, so right around the corner. Not only is it better to have solar and other sources of renewable energy from an environmental perspective, but it's going to be cheaper for our town. My husband and I put solar panels, panels on our roof last October, so we are fairly new owners of a solar system, or, yeah, not a solar system. A solar panel system. One of the reasons we did it is we care about our environment. The other reason we did it is because it's projected that that system is going to produce a return on investment that's pretty similar to if we had invested that money in the stock market. So often, the town council has to make decisions that are a series of trade-offs, because we can't have everything. But this isn't actually a trade-off kind of decision. This is a win-win decision. This saves us money in the long term, and it produces a better outcome for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Come on up.
Good evening. Tom Mazarella, 600 Walcott Hill Road. I'd like to make a few comments about tonight's meeting. Going through the agenda items, trying a little bit different format here. I thought maybe I'd pose some questions and possibly they might get discussed during the actual presentation. So for item 3A, B3A, some grant money, and also B3B, another grant. Wondering if we could get some explanation, some more specifics as to how the money is actually spent. It says that funds will be used to provide case management services for at-risk youths and families. I'm, I'm curious, is this supplementing town employees already, that already exist? Are we using the money to hire somebody different or sub-workout? If we could get a few more specifics. I think it's great to take grant money, you know, if it's free, might as well get it, but what's it actually being used for? If we, if we have these different departments and these personnel already in place, is the money being used to expand that? If I could just get a little bit more explanation. On item 3BE, we're gonna cancel our first council workshop meeting and have a special town meeting to discuss the Keisha Farms bonding ordinance. And done under the justification, it says, "In addition, the town council may choose to add and vote on other business items." And I'm wondering if that's proper, because you've effectively taken the public speaking portion out of, out of a meeting. Now you're gonna have a special meeting, which I thought was intended to discuss the Keisha Farms property, but evidently, we could put other business in there that the public won't have an opportunity to weigh in on. So I'm, I'm in disagreement with that. On B3F, we're talking again about the Keisha Farms property, and my question is, the text at the bottom under action required, is that the actual text of a referendum question? Or is, is that just some introductory title of what's gonna be expanded on in the future? If we could just get some clarification. And the last item I want to bring up, and I'm starting to sound like a broken record, the purchase of four police vehicles. Under justification, it says, "The vehicles will be removed because they're past their life cycle. The aging vehicles would be increasingly not in service due to needing, needed repairs." And the time off-road for maintenance would continue to grow if we don't replace the vehicles. I, I've brought it up several times. I'm gonna keep harping on it. I believe there is software available, like fleet management software, where you can track maintenance of equipment, of vehicles, heavy equipment, and you can look at what the costs are and what the downtime is for those different pieces of equipment or cars. And I don't see any reason to replace a vehicle or a truck on a schedule. X number of years, we're gonna replace certain vehicles. Once they hit five years old or seven years old, I'm not sure what the case is for police vehicles, but that doesn't seem to be a valid reason to spend $200,000 on replacement vehicles. If a vehicle's properly maintained, and I know we have our own maintenance garage with qualified mechanics, and if they do routine maintenance, you're gonna be able to extend the life of the vehicle. And there should be no reason to replace it because of a calendar day, nor odometer miles. I know police vehicles probably idle a lot more than they actually drive. It doesn't mean the car's gonna wear out. And this tracking software or program, anybody could make one if they don't wanna purchase the software, you should be able to say, "Vehicle number 12 has repeatedly broken down. It's been towed to the maintenance garage for 10 times. We had to replace the engine. We had to replace a transmission, and it's, and it's five minutes." So, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Come on up, Gus.
I don't even have to adjust the mic. I guess we're in the same, oh. Am I taller, am I taller than you? Good evening. Gus Colantonio, 16 Morrison Avenue. Before we go to the normal complaining, I wanted to let you people know that a street light on my street, right at the pole there, it hasn't been working for the past month. The pole number is H E L 1016, or 35 dash H. So, I don't know who you get in touch with, but that light, it hasn't been working for a while. And the more present stuff, again, here we go, the stop sign on Morrison Avenue. About a month ago or so, I went to the engineering department, and I asked the question, "What's the frontage, the frontage setback, I guess the construction line, on Hillcrest Avenue?" And there is a gentleman there, you know, who looked up on the map, oh, says, "Oh, it's Zone A, it's 40 feet from the street line." Says, "Oh, great." And then I says, "What about Morrison Avenue?" Morrison Avenue, it's the same thing. Zone A, it's 40 feet. And I says, "No, it's not." "Yes, it is. It's right here." Says, "No, it's not. You got it on paper, but I got it in my front yard. It's only about 25, 30 feet." "Well, I don't know why." "Well, hey, you're working the town. You don't know why." "I don't know why. I've been there for many years. I still don't know why." So I asked the question. I never got an answer. That's sad. Then I says, "What's the right-of-way on Morrison Avenue? 50 feet." "Oh, yeah, I believe that. You know, there are concrete monuments." I says, "And what's..." I says, "And what's the right-of-way on Hillcrest? 80 feet wide." "Wow, that's kind of nice." In other words, if you take the center line of the road, which is basically in the middle of the right-of-way, on Hillcrest Avenue, basically, you've got 40 feet F of the right-of-way, plus 40 feet the construction line, or where the house starts. That means from the center line of the road to the front of the house, it's 80 feet. For Morrison Avenue, on the other hand, assuming the same thing, 50 foot right-of-way, and 25, 30 feet basically now to the construction line, it's only 50 feet. "Wow," I said. "We are basically, how do you say, the, Hillcrest Avenue is about like, you know, 40, 50, 60% farther away than Morrison Avenue. What does that mean? That means that basically, the cars, the traffic, it's much closer to my house, and therefore, it's much, much noisier, louder. As everybody knows, how do you say, noise level doesn't travel on a straight line. It travels in a different way, wavelengths, right? I've told you before, basically, that in 1955, Morrison Avenue never connected to Silas Dean. By the way, in the engineering department, I says, "Why do you think on Morrison Avenue, you have a setback of 25 feet, and on Hillcrest Avenue, you have 40 feet?" I never got an answer. But I offer an answer, probably, to the people listening, and the town engineers right here. And I don't really have proofs, but I think it is because Morrison Avenue was never meant to connect it to Silas Dean. Morrison Avenue was never meant to be a thorough street between Walker Hill and Silas Dean. Matter of fact, Tifton Road still has the existing right-of-way that connects it to George Street, okay? And before 1955, there was no right-of-way from east of Tifton to Silas Dean. Why was that ever changed? I don't know. Now, why am I complaining for 10 years? And I will not go away, even though a lot of my friends say, "You have not been winning at your..." No. I'm not going to go away, because every time I come right here, I'm going to bring it up to you. This is crazy. Hillcrest Avenue is a much safer street. Hillcrest Avenue has drainage. We do not have any. Hillcrest Avenue has a big snow shelf, 15 feet. We only have trees. In certain places, we don't even have a shelf, okay? They have tree stop signs at the intersection of Orchard and Hillcrest. Morrison Avenue has two. Why? But again, I'm not asking for a stop sign at Orchard and Morrison. I'm asking for a stop sign at Tifton and Morrison, because the guidelines call for a stop sign. And God forbid, something happens, you guys are going to be responsible. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak tonight? Come on up, Mr. Young.
Robert Young, 20, Copper Mill Road. At the last town council meeting, which was July 19th, I had mentioned, I had watched what happened up here regarding the changing of the town council rules. I watched from out here as a citizen, and I couldn't really figure out what was going on, but I have to confess that after I went home and I looked on my computer and followed it, I could understand much more what had happened, and how it worked out. And then I went back and I looked at, I guess, that same night, I had mentioned that this has happened to the citizens before in this town, where our privilege or rights, I don't know what we're going to call it, but I think it's a right, to speak twice at the meetings, one of those were taken away back in 2014, or 2004. And at that meeting, there were a number of citizens that got up and spoke, who were recommending that we maintain that five-minute rule for the two sessions. Yet, in the end, in the end, the vote was to take one of those sessions away from the citizens. And, you know, there were some, I guess the ones who voted for it were Andy Adel, Mr. Forrest, he voted for it way back then. And then just last week, at the last meeting, he was the chairman of that committee to take the rights away from the citizens to speak. He's a bad guy. Ms. Fortunaro, Paul Montanieri, and Deputy Mayor Karajikas all voted to take the people's rights away, back then, in 2004. In the minutes, to omit the public comments at the end of the meeting, Andy Adel said, right from here, right from the minutes, that affording citizens true opportunities to speak at the beginning of the meeting is adequate time enough, along with the various other ways to communicate with the council. That was his idea, that we got twice to talk. Well, if you had a special issue, we get to talk, and then we get to talk at public comment, the regular comment section. But if there isn't a second one, he's wrong. But he has to make his argument, and which was a very poor one, which, you know, hey... But then we had some real fighters on the Republican team. Consular Ser Nikki, she fought like heck to at least give us three minutes at the end of the meeting. But that wasn't good enough. There had to be no minutes at the end of the meeting, blessed by our good friend over here, Mr. Forrest. So, since 2004, March of 2004, and during the time, other citizens were getting up, asking to have it restated and denied, it wasn't until 2009 that we were able to get our ability to speak again at a town council meeting twice. December 7th, 2009, they had, I guess the Republicans had taken over, and in that, they went ahead and brought back the five-minute rule to speak at the end of the meeting. The only person who voted against that was Paul Montanieri. Of course, Mr. Forrest wasn't on the team at that time, so we don't really know what he would have voted, but at the last town council meeting, he definitely wanted to take the rights away for five minutes from us citizens, which I think was pretty pathetic. But of course, there's others here, sitting up here also, that were on his team to do the same. I'm not going to go through all of this, but you know, at the last meeting, we had what's known as a hero. We had a great hero who stepped up and started the conversation about why the citizens should not lose their rights to speak. And that was Mr. Spinella. He spoke very gallantly in favor of keeping it. And then, of course, the folks down the other end, Mr. Hurley, Mr. Rell, joined in, and before you know it, we got our rights back to speak without really losing. But we do have people up here who fought very hard to take our rights away. And I think the whole town should know about this. You can go and watch it. You can read some of these people's lips on the television.
Okay, Mr. Young, are five minutes up?
What they were saying, like, "Oh, we're losing our ordinance."
Wrap it up, please.
And it's really pathetic how we have people up here who would take rights away from citizens, and think that they're doing a great thing for us all. So, madam, you know, you talked about transparency that night, too. Again, I say, you don't know a word, you don't know anything about transparency.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
You constantly have held back information.
You can speak again at the end.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak tonight? Come on up, Mr. Rue.
One of my favorite complaints is, "Can you hear me? Can you hear me okay? Can you hear me okay? Well, I have a heck of a time hearing you folks, still." Anyway, we'll address that issue later. One of the things that brings me back, and I live a pretty busy life for an old man, is someone sent me a little note, well, first of all, did I address my, did I identify who I was? Oh, I didn't, I forgot.
You have no idea who you are.
How terrible. George A. Rue, 956 Cloverdale Circle, comma, "Spoke on behalf of the Weathersfield Taxpayers Association, Incorporated, in welcoming back the re-elected town officials, as well as the new officials. Mr. Rue reminded the council that less than 40% of the voters in Weathersfield elected the present council, and they should keep in mind that this was not a mandate." I was, "Stop." He said, "What's that got to do with anything? It's got to do with Bob Young's comments? It's got to do with one of the things that unsettled me at one of the last meetings, where you're going to say, 'Five minutes, you sit down, shut up.'" And then there was also talk about not permitting people and citizens to speak and address issues more than once, to kind of stifle, in effect, the citizens' input. And let me just read on, and then I'll make another couple of comments. He said that, Mr. Rue stated that the Weathersfield Taxpayers Association, and incidentally, I've still listed in the calendar as the taxpayer's vice president, or president, or whatever, "to rethink the council ruling of doing away with public comment at the end of the council meeting, okay? As they believe this to be inappropriate intrusion on the rights of citizens." I think, in a way, anything that interferes with the ability of these citizens to speak to our elected officials at the local level, and that's where we've got to speak these days. Do I worry too much about many of the things you do? No, I don't. But that is one of them, when we, as citizens, do not have the right to come up and speak. And I think that's anathema, okay? So, anyway, I share that with you. I don't like it. And many people come, they're a bit intimidated, they're quiet, they're afraid, and you say, "You're five minutes up, go sit down." I don't think it's a smart move. And in light of what is happening to our country in Washington, which worries me a heck of a lot more, I don't think that any of that kind of thinking should move into our local, into our local government under any circumstances. All right, next item. It was just a brief item in the historic farms purchased in the Keisha Farm. I am not against the acquisition of open space, okay? And I certainly, generally, at this point, I'm open-minded on it, and I think the things that have to be protected in this town are very important. Where's Jim? He spoke earlier about the racetrack. Now, I don't think any of you were probably even, yeah, some of you were alive at the time of the racetrack.
We were there.
But there were a number of us who were down there fighting at Cynthia Matthews' house and other places to keep that anathema also out of the town. So I think it's not a bad idea. What worries me are the grandiose ideas that a libel will come from committees and tell them, "We're going to build a stadium, or we're going to build more ball fields, or we're going to do..." I don't know what your libel would do down there. So if you, if this town wants to earmark that piece of property for good purposes, and buy it, and hold it, and then develop some meaningful uses for that land, and that does not mean the expansion of services and activities that are going to cost the town more, both in terms of light, or new football stadium, or grass, or football fields, or who knows what, all geared, in many cases, towards recreation, recreational activities. I think the thing that that farm does for this town is what some of these ladies spoke about here, in terms of preventing, preventing climate warming and making the environment in this town better, okay? Now, there are many in this country, and I got tongue-in-cheek, I wish you all noticed it, that's a lot of fake news, you know? And anybody that believes that is a little bit tect in the head, you know? So, again, the support for that, I think, is sound. I think you make doggone, be very careful as to the usage of how that piece of, how that property is used. And don't start right away taking everybody's idea and getting these great ideas, okay? That's that particular item. I got one other one. I missed the last council meeting, because sometimes I have this little friend that comes to my house, and by the time he, by the time he even comes, we're both kind of tired, and I'm more tired than he is. But, so I watched it on TV. I couldn't hear a damn word anybody said, not a single solid word. I could hardly hear any of the people who spoke here tonight. I couldn't hear any of the, hardly hear any of the people who spoke here tonight. And yet, when I hear and see in the town, we talk about high technology, and we're going to have all of this new stuff, and computers, and this, and that, and the next thing, and we can't have a microphone that either hang around your necks, so you can't sit back and get away from it, so the public can't hear what you say, or maybe this thing got to be very directional, and people come up here and they get back, and they're a little short, or a little too tall, and they're afraid.
You're five minutes out.
That's all right. I'm going to ignore it, okay?
No.
I'm almost done.
Okay, but Mr. Rue...
So I've had a couple of arguments with people over five minutes.
We, I know. We are trying to adhere to the five-minute rule, so please finish up.
Anyway, that, I would say, is also another infringement and an insult to the community to try to shut us up after five minutes. And I think, my language is a little firm, my language is firm, but I think, in respect to the majority and to the entire council, that is probably one of the more unwise decisions, unwise decisions that this council is making. And I, for one, am not in favor of any of that kind of stuff. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else from the public who would like to speak tonight? Anybody else? Okay, seeing no one from the public, we'll move into council reports. Do council members have reports to make? Deputy Mayor?
Since the last meeting, the EDIC committee has met, and we were brought up to date on all the various parcels in town. And if anybody's on Facebook, you can see that the Fun Zone building is coming down. I put up a picture the second day they started on the project, and this past Monday, you know, a second one to show the progress within a week. So that building's on its way to not existing anymore, and it'll be starting on, working on a new project very soon.
Thank you. Any other reports? Okay, seeing none, we'll move into council comments. Any council members have comments tonight? Consular Forrest.
Thanks, Mayor. This comment, I'm trying here, George, to get right into the microphone. The comment goes out to several individuals who spoke related to energy. There was an energy committee in town. It did come up with a final report, probably five or six years ago. I'm not sure if that report was ever actually passed by the council, but it certainly still exists, and if there is some type of, if there's some consolidation of effort that people want to get together and start to think about solar, and the new solar that's sort of coming out, mostly out of Buffalo now, then I'd be happy to talk to you afterwards and see if there's some type of a consensus, and see if we get the citizenry involved in that good work. So, there has been a lot of work in the past, but I'd be happy to talk to them in the future.
Thank you. Any other council comments?
Just a question to say, where, just where are we with the hiring of the custodial supervisor? I know one was hired and left abruptly, and just kind of want to understand where the hiring is for that.
Do you have the answer for that yet? Thank you.
I have to get closer to the mic. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm worried if my wife can hear you at home.
Oh, okay.
If I'm at home, it's a burden.
The applications have closed for that, and we have an interview panel set up on Thursday.
Thank you.
Any other council comments? Okay, moving on to town manager's report.
I just have a couple of things. I'd like to mention that we're moving forward with our streetlight projects. We, as you know, the town has bought the streetlights, and we asked residents to give us input. On three different streets in town, we put different light fixtures, all at the same 3,000K ambient light, if you will, but the fixtures are just, were just a little bit different. And we asked people to call in and give us their opinion. We also got opinion from staff. We took information from references, and the light fixtures that are on Knott Street are the light fixtures that will be going up in town. So I just want to make that announcement, that based on, they're the most commonly ones used. used, they're cost-efficient, easy to maintain, and came out ahead in what everybody was looking at in terms of the lighting. So those are the lights. So if you drive down Knott Street, kind of in the middle of the street, right near Charles Wright School, if you look up, you'll see the light fixture. Or if you don't notice it, that's even better, that means it's doing its job. So, over the next several months, you'll see people in town starting to change over the light fixtures. So that's coming up.
Thank you. Will that work be done by the end of the year? Is that the hope?
Our plan is to have it done in the fall.
Okay, thank you.
And one other item to mention also is that the town just received good news in terms of our, we applied for grants to do some street repair here in town, two different grants through the Local Transportation Capital Improvement Program through CROG and the State DOT. And we've been funded to do the reconstruction of Wilkett Hill Road and Franklin Avenue from Jordan Lane to Victoria Road in Hartford, and also the Highland Street pavement rehab from Rocky Hill Town Line to Thornbush. So two of those projects through our engineering department, putting in for grant applications through CROG. We just found out at a meeting last Thursday that we're gonna be funded for that and be moving forward in, over the next year, as we develop plans and move forward with those two-street rehab projects.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Town Clerk's communication, do you have anything? Okay, very good, thank you. I don't believe we have any resignations or appointments to boards and commissions tonight, so we will move to the approval of the ordinance amending Chapter 10 of the Weathersfield Harbor Management Commission. Do I have a motion? Councilor Forrest?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to amend the ordinance regarding Chapter 10 of the Weathersfield Harbor Management Commission effective the 1st of September 2018, as outlined in the agenda packet.
Thank you. Will you be speaking to that?
A second.
That would help. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Kathy, would you speak to that?
Sure. The Harbor Management Commission, the only change in this is it's going from six members to seven members. The reason for that is the Harbor Management Commission is part of the Advisory Parks and Recreation Board, and through council's action at the last meeting, council had the Parks and Recreation Board go from six members to seven members. So this is just cleaning up some language in the Harbor Management Commission.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments on this? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? And any abstentions? Okay, motion carries, thank you. We're leaving the vehicle lift on the table, so next is other business. Juvenile Review Board grant for social and youth services. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion, authorize the town manager to apply for and accept an Office of Policy and Management grant of $7,980 for assistance to our juvenile review board.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Kathy, will you be speaking to us?
I can speak to this a little bit, but with us this evening is the Assistant Director of Social and Youth Services, Erica Texira, who's been very much involved with this grant and can certainly answer any questions.
Thank you, Erica.
Good evening, thank you, Kathy. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Town Council members. We are here tonight because we have the opportunity to apply for funds to support our juvenile review board for the fifth year now in a row. The only change this year is the amount has decreased a little bit, and the funding will be issued through OPM instead of DCF. We have a very active, wait, sorry.
Technical trouble?
Yeah. You're fine. Oh, okay.
High technology, can't handle that. Oh, my God.
George, I just texted my husband at home and asked if he could hear us, and he said he can hear us at home.
Yeah, but he's not as old as me.
Oh, that's true.
We have all the old system.
I'm sorry, Tindra, please continue.
The amount has decreased a little bit this year, and the funding will be issued through OPM instead of DCF, so those are the two changes that we have for this year. We have a very active, diverse, and invested board, and this grant allows us to provide intensive case management services to the youth that are brought to our attention, as well as their families. And in terms of the case management support, we do hire case management, very minimal hours staff, that is less than 10 hours a week, to provide intensive case management, which includes coming to the juvenile review board meetings, as well as assessments, intensive assessments that we have, an intake process, we'll conduct referrals for any type of counseling treatment, and a bunch of other different things that families might have needs for.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Any questions? Okay, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you. The next item is the Community Mini Grant for Social and Youth Services. Do I have a motion?
Yes, motion to authorize the town manager to apply for and accept a grant of $5,000 for prevention and response efforts for the opioid crisis in collaboration with the town of Berlin.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Are you gonna speak to that too, Erica?
Yes, I am.
Great.
Do you have anything you wanted to add, Kathy?
No, go ahead.
So this is a new grant that we will be collaborating with the town of Berlin to target the current opioid crisis together. Rocky Hill and Newington will also be applying for the same $5,000 grant. So if approved, this will allow for $10,000 to be used within the Central Connecticut Health District for us to, for the four towns to collaborate for project planning, implementation, and carrying out deliverables, targeting the opioid crisis. Deliverables for this grant include substance abuse and overdose prevention, community education, local public awareness regarding the opioid crisis, as long as, as well as a bunch of other deliverables that we will be targeting.
Thank you. Are there any questions on this? Counselor Rell?
Thank you, Erica, and thanks for saying that it's a new grant, because I don't think I'd ever seen this before, and unfortunately, opioids are hitting our attention more today than last year, which was more than the year before, and year before, year before, in the last five years. So this is something, finally, we're starting to realize that needs to be tackled. You know, seeing the cases come out of the New Haven Green of eighty-some-odd overdoses, maybe it was heroin, maybe it wasn't K-2, whatever that is. Are we seeing a prevalence of overdoses? Are you seeing it with any of the youth in social services cases that are coming into the town?
We're not seeing overdoses so much with youth under 18, but there have been a couple with recent graduates, so young adults. We're seeing them start the use as young adults, and then the addiction is starting to really take over people's lives in their 30s. The medium age, I believe, is somewhere in the 40s right now of where the crisis is hitting the hardest.
Right. And specifically of the $5,000, what are we doing? What's the town gonna be doing, or collaborating with Berlin and the two other towns with?
So we, we're collaborating with this one, just with Berlin, and then Rocky Hill and Newington are going in together, so we can pool $10,000 together. And what we are gonna do with this money is really is education into the community.
Is it, I'm sorry, pooling $10,000 or $20,000?
$10,000 together, so five and five.
Okay.
Yes, between the four towns. And since, since we are working with the Central Connecticut Health District already on these subcommittees for the opioid crisis, we thought it'd be a great opportunity for all of us to work together. So we will be doing different types of prevention workshops. We will be trying to meet with prescribers in the community to make them aware of systems that they could be using to track prescription of opioids. We also will be working with the school systems to bring in presenters. We will be holding a training on Narcan training, which is the reversal for an opioid overdose. And we haven't thought of all of our, all of our deliverables yet, but we will be doing a lot of prevention.
Okay. Great. One step forward.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Lester?
Thank you, Mayor. Erica, I share Counselor Rell's, and I'm sure we all do, of how important this is and how the problem keeps growing. Do we keep statistics in Weathersfield in terms of that, and is that something, I know not tonight, but you could share with the council and the public?
Oh, absolutely, yes, we do have statistics. And the Health Department has really taken the initiative to get this, the ball rolling and spreading it into the community, and they have different forums that they've been holding over the past year or so. I know many of the counselors have attended some of those meetings. They have ongoing work groups each month that meet for different aspects of the opioid crisis. I know just in terms of the state of Connecticut, we had a 13% increase in deaths for overdose in 2017 from 2016. And that, the number of deaths in 2017 was 1,040, and in 2016 it was 917. And it's just, the curve is still going up, and we don't see it trending down as of yet.
Thank you. If we can get Weathersfield numbers, that would be good. Thank you.
Thank you. Were there other questions, comments? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is the Grand List Tax Write-offs. Do I have a motion? Counselor Forrest?
Move to write off the uncollectible taxes on these unidentified real estate, personal property, motor vehicle, and supplemental motor vehicle accounts for the 2002 Grand List year per Section 12164 of the Connecticut General Statutes.
Thank you. Kathy, are you gonna have Marlene come up? Okay? Do I have a second?
Second.
No, honestly.
That's my job to second things.
Summer break, thank you. Okay, welcome, Marlene.
Good evening. This is, would be the 16th collectible list of 2002, once the 2017 became due July 1st, so by law we have to write off the accounts. We don't, we are no longer able to pursue them.
Okay, are there any questions? Counselor Forrest?
Is it, I was reading through, just, oh, here we go again. On the, on the accounts for, that we have to write off, or, excuse me, do we, are we required to write them off, or is it an option to write them off?
No, we're required to.
The law says shall.
Mm-hmm.
No kidding. Now, prior to write off, prior to write off, can we sell them? Like, there's all, obviously, there's tax sales of all kinds of things. Could we sell these?
I would have to look into that.
At pennies on the dollar?
Yeah, that, I'm not sure, I would have to look into it. I don't know if another party would have the authority to go after them.
Right, which is, I mean, there's tax sales for all kinds of stuff, and I was wondering if this is sellable. And the, what have been the, what is the process that we go through for collection that it's been 15 years and these people aren't, haven't paid them, or entities, it's not necessarily a person?
Well, the real estate ones are those vacant lots that we can't seem to do anything with, that's what those are. And the cars, a lot of them are, they left the state, and at the time, the list became due. The town didn't have the utilities to go after the people. We have now, we have Accurant that we look people up on, and we find, as you'll see, as the lists go down, the current list now have less and less people that this is happening to, because we have more ways of finding them. And the same with the businesses, we get them right away as they're not paying, we use the marshal, marshal serves warrants.
Sure, right. Now, in the past, when did Accurant come into play?
It's been a couple of years now that we've had it.
So have we, even though these are, so a couple of years ago, these debts would have been 13 years old, and, and how did the system work for those, for this current 35, a little over 35,000 group?
We tried finding some of the people that were on, when we first got it, that were on the older list, and a lot of them was hard. Some of the people changed their names, they went to other states, and they just choose not to pay it. Because we don't report to credit bureaus, it's really no hit to them if they don't pay. If the other state doesn't cooperate with Connecticut, which I believe, as far as I know, only Florida checks with us if someone tries to register, so if they register in another state, they're home free unless they end up coming back to Connecticut.
Aside from Accurant, are there any other processes which you think in the future that we might, I'm being a little prospective now, that we might think about implementing in order to reduce this list further going forward?
We do, we use the internet, because Concord is helpful in finding businesses or the owners of the businesses. Other than that, it's, you know, with the real estate, it's really the lots, we just really have to get, do something about those lots.
Will there, will there continue to be, continue to be a tax lien on them, though? Even though this would be a discharge from our?
Well, there won't on the ones we're writing off, but they're only on, they're, they're on every year. So even though we're writing off this year, the lots that are being written off this year?
Right.
They're on the next 15 going forward.
Can you explain that a little further?
So they're on the 2017, going back to 2003.
So for the real property, those would just sort of continue?
Yes.
But for the personal property, motor vehicle, and?
Those go down. Those, those have gone down quite a bit. The personal property, it's a little hard if they go out of business and they file bankruptcy, then we have no, again, we have no recourse.
And if there, someone does file bankruptcy, though, are we involved in bankruptcy discharge?
If they list us, yes, we get something from their lawyer. A lot of times when they don't list us and we send them a notice, then they in turn reach out to their lawyer. But they have to list at us in the bankruptcy, which most of them do, because they don't want us hounding them.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries. The next item is the, excuse me, motion to approve the fiscal year 2018 budget transfers. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the fiscal year 2018 budget transfers.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have Mike O'Neill here tonight to answer questions. Kathy, would you like to begin?
Sure, this is, with Mike's great assistance, we've worked on closing out the end of the year, the fiscal year 18, and we're presenting to council tonight the ways to close out that year with both making sure that we're thinking forward, so that we're putting money forward for any unanticipated items, and also looking at current items and what we need to fund as we're moving through this year.
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight.
You're welcome. Good evening, Mike O'Neill, Finance Director. I guess I'll try to give you a relatively high-level overview of things, and it's certainly take any questions that you have and go into more detail. I'll speak from this sheet, which is a spreadsheet with terribly small print on it that I'm responsible for, but try to get everything on one page. Big picture, the overall results for the year. Revenues were short of budget, and all, everything that we're speaking about, I should say first, is subject to the audit, which Bloom Shapiro, our auditors, will be on site at the end of next month for a couple of weeks, and then we would issue a report sometime after that. So it's, all these numbers are subject to that, but we are, we're done paying bills, we're done on the expenditure side. Accounting standards do allow us to continue to record revenues attributable to prior years until the end of, until 60 days after year-end, so the end of this month. So we do have a little bit more, don't expect anything dramatic on the revenue side, but anyways, that, that's where we are.
Mike, can you speak into the microphone? I'm getting indications that they can't hear you on TV.
Okay, I apologize.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Very sorry. So revenues, as the numbers stand right now, revenues are short of budget by 672,000. That's due to the governor's holdbacks. We had planned for an $809,000 shortfall, and if you recall, in early February, you approved a deficit mitigation plan to plan for that. So revenues are short. Expenditures, we have $2.1 million in unexpended funds. So before we consider what we, what you might do in terms of transfers, we have to take away from that the funds that we set aside for the deficit mitigation plan. So that's, that's what, on the sheet, you can see at the bottom of Column 1, $2.1 million unexpended, and then we deduct from that, Column 2, $809,000, which was the deficit mitigation plan. Column 3 is reconciliation transfers. There were three departments that were over budget, and so it's necessary to make transfers. And so it's necessary to make transfers in order to cure those deficits. Two of those, town manager and town attorney are due to legal expenses which exceeded budget. And the third is the tax collector. That's over by $4,000, and that is attributable to payroll. It's a very small department, and one of the two full-time employees is a member of a bargaining unit where we, if you recall in the budget, we do not budget for pay increases for bargaining groups that are in negotiation. We put that elsewhere in the budget. So in the 18 budget, there was one of the two employees who was budgeted flat for payroll. And when that group settled, there was a retroactive pay. And so they were over on the salary line, which was expected. And only noticeable in smaller departments, because generally speaking, this year, we had unexpended funds kind of across the board. And so those deficits wouldn't be noticeable in the larger departments. So column three is the reconciliation transfers, as we call them. And then in columns four, five, and six are a series of different proposed transfers to one of three places. The various reserve accounts in the capital non-recurring expenditure fund. That's the fund where we pay for rolling stock vehicles, equipment, things like that. We also pay for revaluation and some other things, IT, larger IT equipment, and that sort of thing, and the radio system. So that's one source. The other source is the capital projects fund reserve. That's for large capital projects. And then the last destination that we're proposing is the compensated absences fund. And that's the funds that are set aside to pay out accrued leave, sick time, for employees that are entitled to that. There's still some, some employees who've been around long enough that they have, they're still entitled to that. And so we maintain a fund where we use that when there's larger balances to pay out. So if you take the, and I'll work in round numbers, unexpended funds of 2.1 million, subtract the 809,000, which is the deficit mitigation plan, that leaves you with 1.3 million. And the proposed transfers, if I just summarize those, to those three sources that I mentioned, the proposal would be to transfer $82,000 to the compensated absences fund, $506,000 to the capital projects reserves, and $698,000 to the capital non-recurring expenditure fund. I'll stop there.
Thank you. Do counselors have questions or comments? Counselor Hurley?
We spent $100,000 over on legal fees for, those were all for contract negotiations, a lot with the local 818.
The overage in the town manager line is where the legal fees for labor negotiations is budgeted. Town attorney would be for non-labor matters.
Do we know why the town attorney went over by 50, almost 50,200?
I summarized that information this afternoon. I don't, I mean, I'm not familiar enough with it. I would, I summarized it by, you know, by matter. I don't know that.
Could you send that to us, so we could take a look at?
Yeah. I mean, I don't, I just don't want to say anything that, you know, as far as is pending litigation, that I shouldn't say on that. But we do, to answer your question, we've summarized that. We summarized it for three years, so you can kind of see. Tried to boil it down to a dozen or so, a dozen or so matters.
Thank you.
Then I have a couple of comments, too.
Go ahead, yeah.
I don't think we should be paying $10,000 to update the town manager's conference room. And I don't think we should be putting another $100,000 into the salt shed, or putting $100,000 into undesignated reserves. I think that's 210,000 that can go into roads, which we normally do. We normally try to get a road done for some of this money.
Any other comments? Have you finished?
I'm finished right now.
Okay. Counselor Rel?
Yeah, actually, in looking at this, and Mike brings up a good point, town council transfer conference, it just says conference room. We assume that it's upgrades to the conference room. I really don't know. Can somebody, either town manager or Mike, acting town manager, sorry Kathy, or Mike, talk about that? Do we know what's going on with that?
Yes, we were just looking to replace the tables, the table and chairs in that room. Just the chairs are just in very terrible shape, and that was all. We were just looking to do that.
Have we looked, has there been a cost analysis or anything like that? Anybody going to look at what vendors are selling which products? Or are we just going off the shelf or something?
No, we've been talking, staff over the past several months have looked into different areas where we've looked at some quotes and things. So we've been looking at that to see if money would ever be left or we could find money to replace. Really, it's the chairs that are the key.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Just right now, with the unknowns still going, and I sound like a broken record, but the unknowns going forward, $10,000 doesn't seem like a lot. But, you know, I think right now, at this current situation where we're at, and not knowing if we're going to have to do with a deficit mitigation plan next year or not, what the possibility of ECS funding, state funding, any kind of grants coming into the state starting in January, when the legislature starts tackling their new deficit, I don't think $10,000, while it may seem small, is an appropriate item for right now. Just my thoughts. And I don't know if there is any way we can, I mean, the proposal is as a whole, if I'm not mistaken. So, I mean, we can't do it by line item, can we?
I would think we'd be, I would think we'd be able to make a motion to amend, we could amend the motion to read something else, if that's the council's intent.
Well, we have a couple, well, Mike mentioned a couple. That was one that caught our, at least my attention as well. I do agree that the undesignated reserve, the 205,000, was that the one you were?
No.
Or which one were you talking about?
Below that, 100,000.
Oh, okay. Yep. Where is that on? And the salt shed. Okay, that's where you came up with the $200,000. Yeah, I think those two, if I'm not mistaken, we, and Sally's not here. I don't want to put Derek on the spot on salt shed. I don't think it's under your purview. But how much money have we given towards the salt shed reserves already? Mike?
Kathy, excuse me. Kathy or Mike, is that number you have handy?
I have that. I just have to find it in my.
Yeah, same answer.
Okay. While they're looking, are there other questions or comments about this? Go ahead, go ahead.
I'd like to amend the motion to...
Okay. Well, I just had a couple more questions.
Okay.
Yeah, more questions.
Go ahead.
While you guys are still looking. Town Hall chiller study, $30,000. That's, again, something I had never heard of. I know, I mean, just looking at some of these security film for schools, have we gone through, has the Board of Ed gone through a, maybe, Counselor Forrest would know, haven't been on the Board of Ed. Has the Board of Ed gone through any kind of plan or security assessment on the need for the security film?
I can speak to a couple of them. The security film was in the budget. And we had to reallocate funds from that in order to remove the underground oil tank.
Okay.
So when we removed that money for that purpose of the security film, it was our intention, if funds became available, we would put that money back. We would re earmark that money, or earmark that money anew for the security.
And if I'm not mistaken, it also goes for the flooring at Hamer and Charles Wright?
Exactly.
The roof repair. So that was all, but I don't remember the chiller.
The chiller is because there's a water problem there, and there may not be a chiller if we don't figure out how to fix it.
Okay.
And Kathy can speak more eloquently to that.
Okay. Go for it.
The chiller is located on the second floor of the library. And this past summer, again, we had an issue where if it rains a certain way, it rains into that building, water accumulates in there, accumulates under the chiller, around the chiller. This time, it leaked through the wall, down into the first floor, into the fire alarm, set the fire alarm off. So when we went up there to clean it up, pump out the water, clean up the mess, when they pulled the water tray from underneath the chiller, there were parts, unfortunately, of the bottom of the chiller that had rusted right out. So we don't know how long that's going to last.
Okay.
And so what we want to do with these funds is to bring in a consultant, to do a design, to give us a cost estimate of what it's going to take to replace it. And part of that means that in today's world, these types of units should be outside on the ground. And so that takes a little more sophisticated engineering than we're capable of doing. And my concern is if we don't start doing something now, and at least getting a cost estimate for replacing that chiller, I don't know, we can't guarantee that unit is already well past its life expectancy.
Gotcha.
And when we saw the metal just rusted out, that concerns me.
Had there been anybody doing routine maintenance on that chiller, looking at it? Tremco is up on our roofs every four or five years, looking at any holes or where any kind of mechanical is attached to the roofs through any kind of, you know, water barrier? Had anybody noticed any problems with that in the past at all?
I believe.
Have we been doing routine maintenance on it?
I believe we've done routine maintenance on it all the time, and it's just very weird. The way it's designed and the water comes into the building, it's just a terrible design in today's world. They've done, if you could see that unit, they've done everything possible to keep the water out. And it's just such an old unit that you're patching wherever you can. It's almost like we need to, never mind, I was going to say that commercial that shows you duct taping the bottom of a boat or something. Just haven't done, probably done pieces of that.
Dare I ask that if a study to move it from the roof to a ground unit costs $30,000, what would a replaced chiller unit, or chiller cost? And if I'm not mistaken, for those who might not know, a chiller, I would imagine, is something where the air conditioning goes through, condenses, cooled air, warm air goes in, cold air comes out somehow?
Yes, and it's for the whole building, not just the library. So it's also the town hall. So it's both facilities, and it just happens to be housed over there. I'm not, I'd be giving you a ballpark figure of sort of what we talked about, but it wouldn't be a number that I would ask you to hold me to. I would say 200 to 300,000 maybe, not knowing what it would take for it to go outside on the ground, outside on the ground with maybe the ductwork coming into the building. That's really just a, Sally, I think, is going to be here later, but she could certainly give us a...
And this isn't, wasn't during your timeframe, but when the town hall was remodeled, just a short number of years ago, had that been even considered at all? Do we know?
I don't know that.
Okay. Something probably to look into, whether or not it was brought before the renovation committee and tabled, or never even brought before them, so.
We could certainly look into that.
Okay. Back to the salt shed. How much we got into that so far?
All right, I could try and, I could speak to the salt shed for you, just clarify what's occurred this past year. You may remember, in recent years, staff has been talking with other municipalities that put up similar sheds, as well as manufacturers. And we were given a few years back, a ballpark number, about $500,000 should cover the cost of the shed. So over the years, CIP, CIAC had allocated CIP funds to the project over a number of years. I think we got up in the ballpark about 480-something this past fiscal year. So we put together plans this past spring, early summer, based on DEP's recommendation. You may remember, I was here in the spring, they had originally indicated that they, next year, they were looking at issuing a new permit that may preclude us from installing the shed at the site, which is where we need to have it because of being in the floodplain. So we worked kind of double time to try and get a project out. We had two separate bids. We had bid a salt shed structure, just the canopy, steel cover, fabric canopy structure, in early June. And we had three prices on that. And you may recall, we bid it out in three different sizes, because we were thinking the price may come in higher than we thought. And prices ranged from 216, from the smallest shed, up to 246. And when we came for approval, we said, you know, depending on how the bid for the site work came back, we may opt to go with a smaller shed size than the one we initially wanted. Originally, we were looking at 80 by 90 shed. We did scale it back, knowing that the prices came in pretty high to a 70 by 80-foot shed, which was, we felt was still large enough to accommodate the goals of the project. And then we went on to do more detailed design for the site work. So we had geotechnical engineering, we had study done, we did soil boring. What we found was the soils down there in a particular location we were looking to put the shed wasn't as ideal as we were hoping. So what that meant is there was unsuitable material below the footings that would need to be removed and replaced prior to putting in the foundation to be able to support the structural loads. So that was an anticipated finding when we did that. So we went through, we went through on the smaller size foundation. We've, you know, cut the cost as much as we could, and we bid that. And those bids came in in July, higher than we anticipated to, which put us over the money we had available. So the decision at the time was, DEP had said over summer, they've kind of changed their timing. And if they issued a new permit, they said it would be October 1st of next year at the earliest. And they also said that, you know, they can't really even guarantee it would preclude us from putting there. So the pressure to get it done this year kind of was relieved by DEP saying that, really, if we were in construction by October 1st next year, we should not have a problem. So the thought is, based on the fact that we put this out to bid kind of in the June timeframe for construction of projects like this, it's kind of late in the season. A lot of contractors are already booked for the year. You don't always get the best pricing. We thought it was best to kind of pull back and look at another option. We had talked with staff. There is another option at the site where we feel, we're hoping we might get better soil conditions and better site grades that might allow us to reduce the volume of concrete we'll need for the foundation, and also minimize the volume of unsuitable material that would need to be taken out, which hopefully will reduce the cost of the project. Again, we're looking at doing a redesign, so we're thinking of, if we can move the structure, cut down on the size, and hopefully find a location on site that's nearby, but still will, may work for us, we can get the price down, in addition to bidding over the winter, when we'll have more competition and we're expecting to get better pricing. We thought it made sense, let's just pull back and see what we can do. The request for additional funds is just based on looking at what we had gotten for a low bid price. The steel canopy structure that we had the low bid on, we've been told, because of some of the new tariffs that have come in, they do manufacture this particular product in Canada, they may or may not be able to hold the pricing on that. So we've, we've got a couple of things out there, but thinking that if they are willing to hold the pricing, or even if there's a little bit of an increase in the pricing on the canopy, and what we got for low bids, that we're going to be over the 500,000 that we were allocated to this point. So the request was to kind of get us a little closer to where we think we're going to be once we put this project out to bid. We have looked at options, and it was bid that way, too, that if we can't have a contractor come in and do all the work, we may need to have fiscal services staff do some of the excavating and material, replacing materials. It would take them away from other responsibilities they have, but that might be a way to try and save costs. So this request is really to try and get us more in the range of where we think we're going to be based on the soil testing and the engineering that we've done to date as to what we found when we were doing this down there.
Okay. In a nutshell, so we're looking at 480-some-odd thousand dollars right now. An additional $100,000 for any kind of... Additional $100,000 for any kind of unforeseen, not unforeseen, but soil borings, showing that more reinforced concrete would be needed? What's the additional $100,000 for? That? Or are we building it bigger?
No, it's really, it's going to cover us to go back and do some more field investigation, to see if this other site would be more suitable for us, where we think we can cut the cost down to some extent. Although, even with that, we expect the money that's been allocated, because that money that's been allocated, they goes to geotechnical engineering and structural engineering, too. So we do have some consultants doing work on this. So that is not a separate, that wasn't a separate funding source as far as design, that was all built in. This was $500,000, $480,000 some odd thousand for design and construction. So a portion of it's been used. We're going to go back and look at some other options preliminarily. If they look good, we'll probably proceed with that, which will require some reengineering to what they've already done, but in the hopes of being able to scale the structure size down. So in a nutshell, we're looking for the extra funds, because I think, based on what we have to date for data, that the money that we have available will not be sufficient to complete the project as we had originally hoped. And like I said, that money, that $500,000 number was more of a recommendation from, you know, over many years ago, before we started allocating funds to it. I think with the fact that cost of steel has gone up, there has been tariffs that have been implemented, and the timing of the bidding that we did, you know, all kind of raised the price up quite a bit. So we are looking every way we can to get the cost down, but that would certainly help us get in more comfortable range, where we won't be requiring our staff to do a majority of the project. They would maybe be doing more of a minimal portion of the project.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
That was a thorough discussion.
Yeah, I'm still on the salt shed. And we're not even going to use the salt shed this coming season. What are we looking at for a timeframe? Tear down existing, start building new, and utilizing what's in it?
Our expectation, since we opted not to move forward with it this year, is we'd use the salt shed again one more winter, with the expectation that in the spring, we would start construction, have this built, spring into early summer. So it would be available.
For the following winter. Very good. Any other questions?
Oh.
Any questions down here? Councilor Spinella?
Have we completely given up looking for another location?
Yeah, we've talked internally about other options. I know Sally feels very strongly that, and she feels it makes the most sense to have this salt shed at the facility, where the equipment is and where staff is, particularly because when it's getting the heaviest use is during winter storms. We had talked about some other possible locations in the area, but being Old Weathersfield and kind of the community surrounding the area, we didn't feel that they were going to be very viable options. So we really felt this was the best case scenario. It is typical to have it onsite with your physical services. We are just in the unusual case of being in the floodplain. And that does affect, you know, what we have for soil conditions down there, which, as I said, turned out to be not as suitable as we were hoping when we started the project.
And this is not something, probably, I mean, you're an engineer. We're supposed to make the policy decisions. We have people come in front of us to start the meeting about how great the meadows are. And there's a reason that the soil down there is not adequate for something like this. It's because it's the meadows, that's why. I've been concerned since day one of putting this thing down there. And I still don't understand why it needs to be put down there. I see what their point is, or why they want it near the trucks, but the downside is potentially catastrophic. I mean, this thing leaks into the meadows, and then what? Then it leaks into the river. I just think there's, there's a lot of negative things that could come as a result of putting it down there, because they want it closer to their trucks. I understand it may be a little more expensive for them to go and take their trucks to a salt shed somewhere else, but I have some serious concerns about this, and I have since day one.
Councilor Hurley?
I'd like to make an amendment to remove the town manager's conference room of $10,000, to remove under list number two, transfer to CIP, undesignated reserves of $100,000, and to remove under list number two, the salt shed of $100,000, and add a line of $210,000 to the road fund.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to amend the first motion. Is there any discussion on the amendment, or the amended motion? Okay, seeing no discussion, let's take a vote on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. And abstain? Anyone abstaining? The motion fails. Is there more discussion on the main motion? Councilor Hurley?
Yeah, I kind of feel that these items are not good right now. And I think it's a shame that, you know, we talk about roads all the time, and we could do a major road with the $210,000. But I understand you voted no, so there's nothing I can do about it.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Councilor Rel?
I concur with Councilor Hurley.
Thank you, I appreciate your concurrence. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, all in favor of the initial motion? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Appreciate it. The next item on the agenda is to cancel the September 4th Town Council workshop meeting, and set the September 4th as a special Town Council meeting. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Mayor, I move to change the Town Council workshop meeting on September 4th, 2018, to a special Town Council meeting.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Kathy?
Sure.
As part of the public hearing necessary for the Keisha Farms, the, we work with a bond attorney that gives us a timeline as to what we need to do in order to make the ballot for the November election. So one of the key things to allow the citizens to vote on this in November is the public hearing has to be done before September 6th, which doesn't give us a lot of time, based on council's schedule. Originally, September 4th was a workshop meeting night. And looking at that, the council has the opportunity to just change that into a special meeting night, where you could have, in essence, a regular council meeting, where you have the public hearing on the Keisha Farm. You can also have public comments after that, and an agenda with a special meeting, you have to identify all your agenda items ahead of time. So any other agenda items you have, you can put on the agenda as part of a special meeting. And one of those agenda items would be, A, the public hearing on the Keisha Farm, and then, two, after the public hearing, the council can vote then on the Keisha Farm bond ordinance, and whether or not to send it to the ballot at the November elections. And you can put other agenda items on that if you wanted to, even though it's a special meeting, because you can identify those ahead of time.
And Kathy, to Tom's question earlier, Kathy and I did discuss it previously, and feel that the special meeting agenda will look like an agenda that we have here tonight. So that there will be, you know, we'll start with the hearing, we'll have public comment, we'll have council comment, we'll have some agenda items that come up between now and Thursday, August 30th, when Kathy would put out the agenda. So we aren't trying to get rid of public comment, we're trying to organize that meeting so that we can vote on the referendum ordinance and get it on the ballot. So I did want to clarify that. Are there any comments or questions on canceling the meeting? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes, thank you. Item F, Keisha Farm. Do I have a motion?
Move to hold a public hearing at its special meeting on Tuesday, September 4th, 2018, on the ordinance entitled "Ordinance Appropriating $2,470,000 for Costs With Respect to the Acquisition of the Keisha Farm Property on Highland Street for Recreational Open Space and Other Municipal Purposes, and Authorizing the Issue of Bonds and Notes in the Same Amount to Finance Such Appropriations." Request the town clerk to publish and post such notice of such public hearing.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments on this? Councilor Hurley?
It's my understanding that this is not necessarily what's going to be on the ballot. The ordinance appropriating 2.47 that she just read? That, it could be different language?
We will set the question.
Yeah, we really haven't talked about it yet.
This is the ordinance that we have to pass in order to get to the next step.
The question, so the question will be different than this?
That's my understanding, Kathy, can you confirm that? Or Doris?
The question has to be shell, and it will be, it is different than what the ordinance says, but it is the same.
So we can change it, is what you're saying?
Pardon me?
You're saying it's different, but it's the same? Can we change it, or do we have to talk about it right now and change it at this meeting?
No, you don't have to change it at this meeting.
So I-
It says, the ordinance for introduction tells you that when the, well, the next, when we get to the question, it will be a shell question. Shall the town of Weathersfield appropriate 2.47, $470,000 for costs with respect to the acquisition of the Keisha Farm property on Highland Street for recreational open space and other municipal purposes?
So we can't change that at all? It's exactly how you just said it?
It's going to be pretty much that, the way I said it.
Well, I think the council needs to have a discussion, though, and I think we can still change it, right?
Right.
That's all I'm asking. Can we change this after we vote tonight?
Oh, yeah.
I believe tonight, I believe tonight is just setting the public hearing for September 4th. So on the September 4th meeting, we'll have a council, we'll have a public hearing, council discussion, and then we will move the ordinance.
Okay.
And part of that, this is the language that comes from our bond counsel. So if we're thinking about some suggestions for other language, I would just want to make sure we get the advice of the bond counsel in that regard.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any abstaining, any opposition, any abstentions? Motion passes. Item G, executive search firm selection. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mayor, I move to hire Strategic Government Resources, SGR, to conduct a recruitment for town manager at a cost not to exceed $28,000.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Councilor Lester?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So on Thursday, Councilor Hurley, Mayor Bello, and myself interviewed three finalists for the executive search for the new town manager. And whereas all three were good, we clearly thought that one was better. And let me give you a couple of reasons why. First off, this firm has 19 years of experience in hiring municipal officials. The lead recruiter, a guy named Doug Thomas, has been with the firm three years, but the previous 27 years was a city manager. 12 years in Florida, and 15 years before that in Michigan. He did extensive research on Weathersfield. He came in already knowing a lot about our town. And we clearly felt that he had a leg up on the other two. The other thing that I think we really liked, you know, and Councilor Hurley and Mayor Bello can speak to this and other things they like, but was their use of social media. In today's world, how important that is, both in marketing the town of Weathersfield and getting the word out to clients. So that was another big thing that I felt was important. And lastly, I'll say that Councilor Hurley, the mayor, myself, we all agreed that this was the best candidate. There wasn't a lot of discussion that the other two may be better, or that it was close, even though they were all qualified and were good, this one was clearly better. So I can confidently recommend SRG. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think, you want me to go?
Go ahead.
Okay. I think Ken kind of said everything that we all kind of had written down. He displayed the knowledge and the skills that are going to be needed to select our next town manager. He was a town manager, like Ken said. He was more enthusiastic about coming to our town. He looked up our town beforehand. He gave, he even gave a few suggestions in the meeting before he even had the job. And I think he's best suited for the job, that him along with his company. I don't know, he's going to be our main person, so we kind of selected him. The company has a good background. So if all the other companies were good, maybe if they put somebody different forward, it could have changed the outcome.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes, thank you. Moving on to bids. We have three paving program bids. The first is road milling. Do I have a motion?
Motion to increase the purchase order for Tilcon Connecticut, Inc. by $40,000 for road milling services, based upon the state contract number 16PSX0206.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Thank you for being here tonight, Derek.
Of course. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, here tonight for approval to increase Tilcon's PO, $40,000. As you may remember, I came in the spring for approval to increase the PO for Tilcon at the time for our spring and summer programs. We are still working under the same state contract that we typically use for this type of work. Tilcon, for the town of Weathersfield, was the low bidder, and we've had good experience with them. So we recommend an increase in their PO to do the work listed for this fall on the roads that are in your agenda item.
Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion passes. The next is for road paving. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion, increase the purchase order for Tilcon Connecticut, Inc. for paving services by $375,000, based upon the state paving contract 17PSX0238.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second.
Okay. Similar to the milling contract, we also use state contract for paving. This is the same contract we used for Tilcon to do the paving in the spring and the summer programs. As I said, we've had very good experience with them. It's worked well, having the same company doing the milling and the paving operation, it just seems to be more seamless, easier for scheduling, and less time required of staff. So I'm recommending an increase in their PO to complete the fall program.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions? Councilor Rel?
Just one comment, that 485, no, $585,000 would be a better number than $375,000. That would be the additional 210. But I don't think that's going to pass tonight, so I think $375,000 will do. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. The final fall paving program, the restoration, site preparation, and drainage. Do I have a motion?
Move to increase the existing purchase order number 20176881 for general paving, in the amount of $260,000 for the town's fall paving program under the current miscellaneous paving preparation/rehabilitation contract.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second.
Okay, as you may know, General Paving is our contractor. They work very closely with our milling and paving contractors during the paving programs, removing curb, replacing curb, putting in driveway aprons, doing some minor drainage improvements that are related to the programs that we're doing. Their contract is up at the end of this year, Their contract is up at the end of this year, so this is a request to increase their existing PO, um, one more time to get through the fall program. Similarly, MDC is gonna, is doing some utility projects in town along Garden Street. They're gonna be paving the road, but we have our contractor doing some of these improvements for what the town would like to see done as part of, uh, the work that was not part of MDC's requirement to do, such as catch basin tops, things of that nature, um, some limited, um, drainage improvements. So combined with that, with one other project, we have a project to have them do some, uh, specific repairs at some intersections in town where we are not gonna be getting there to pave anytime soon, but they're in very poor condition. We have a lot of problems with the paving, a lot of complaints, so they'll be, uh, as part of this money, doing the fall program, um, doing some work ahead of MDC's paving, and also doing some intersection repair, uh, at different locations for us, uh, to help us seal those up before we get to winter. Uh, so this is requested, just to increase their existing PO, um, to get through the fall and the remainder of their contract term.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Ralph?
Uh, thank you, Derek. I like hearing that, uh, the town is gonna work in conjunction with what the MDC is doing on Garden Street. So many times we hear that the state or the town will come in, repave a road, and then all of a sudden, CNG, MDC, every utility known to man comes in, cuts it up, lays down, you know, pour blacktop or, you know, just simply cold patch it, and, um, you're back to the same problem you were before. Um, so the town is not repaving Garden Street. MDC will be doing that, and then the town is doing the other Chesterfield, Main Street, Center, and, you know, some of the town, uh, some of the town roads within that area?
Yeah, when we, when we looked at the program a couple of years back, we were expecting with MDC having doing, been doing this work this year, that we were gonna come in the fall. Um, some of these roads, like Kenwood, Fernwood, Hubbard, were on our paving list. They were aware of it. They wanted to do the mains ahead of time, so some of those roads they're working, we're doing. Um, but the roads that were specifically, uh, for their project that we were not gonna be doing, such as Garden, which is gonna run from Main all the way north to Knot Street, Dorchester, Lincoln, some of the side roads off of there, they will be, uh, paving when they're done with their utility project.
Being a resident of that area, uh, is it gonna tie up, I mean, are they gonna do the roads piece by piece, or is it gonna try and be done all in one? Cause I know, looking at Main Street as you come down Wells, Chesterfield, all those, any major thoroughfare, you're gonna be hitting, you know, um, repaving.
We're working with them right now on schedule. Um, they are planning to do the lower section of Garden Street, which is Main to Church, um, next month. Uh, we are trying to schedule our work around the same timeframe. Some of the work, like the reclamation work, we wanna do before they pave, so we're gonna, we're, we're trying to piggyback it, so yeah, all this is not being done at the same time. I think the northern section of Garden Street, for them, is gonna be a little bit later in the season. They're gonna be doing the paving, so we're trying to stagger it, so it's not completely bound up at once.
Great, thanks, Derek.
Okay, any other comments or questions on the paving? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is Weathersfield High School renovation project change order. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve change order number 00034 to Ferguson Electric for credit of unused funds in the amount of $39,543.0.
Sec, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, well, this sounds like good news. Can't imagine anybody opposing this. Kathy?
Yeah, this is a credit to the, uh, contract for the high school renovation project as part of, we're trying to finalize and close out the contract and the renovation project, and this is one of the steps we have to go through to actually have council, uh, approve this credit.
Sounds good. Are there any questions or comments?
Would there be more credits, or is this the only credit we're getting so, like, for the entire project?
To the best of my knowledge, uh, today, this is the, the only credit that I'm aware of. They're looking to have another meeting in September to kind of finalize everything, and I'm not sure what will come out of that.
$85 million project, we're getting just shy of $40,000 back, uh, credit, okay. Would like to see a little bit more, but, um, I mean, if that's what we're getting, you're right, Mayor, I wouldn't wanna say no to money coming in, but, uh, I would like to have seen that number a little bit higher than 39.5. Just saying. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. All right, the next one we have is approval of purchase of police cars. Go ahead.
I move we table this.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Um, I think if we table, we're not supposed to discuss further, is that right, Dolores? Or can we discuss it if it's been tabled? If we table a motion, is it open for discussion?
No.
Thank you for that confirmation. Okay, so we'll take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion to table passes. Um, we have two ordinances for introduction, the Keisha Farm Bond Ordinance and the Ordinance Amending Chapter 153 Shade Tree Commission. Um, so those will have a public hearing in our next meeting. We move into minutes. Do I have a motion for the July 16th regular meeting?
Motion to approve the meeting minutes from July 16th, 2018.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, are there any changes, corrections? Councilor Ralph?
Busy man tonight, Councilor Ralph. And, and I read the minutes, so, not, um, in quite detail as I probably should, but one did stick out on, um, page, I guess it would be page 18 of the minutes, which is page 72 of our, um, second paragraph. Councilor Ralph asked following, up on Councilor Hurley's question earlier about the community center, did they know about the 5,000 gallon tank? Should not be a dollar sign in the 5,000.
Okay, any other changes to the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Opposed? Are there any abstentions? Okay, motion carries. The special meeting minutes of July 23rd, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the special meeting minutes of July 23rd, 2018.
Do I have a second?
It's my job to second it.
Okay, thank you. Are there any additions or changes to these minutes? Okay, um, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And are there any abstentions? Okay, motion carries. We will return to public comment. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak tonight?
Yes, Colantonio, 16 Morrison Avenue. Am I close enough? Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, that's good. Beautiful. I-
Okay.
I was reading the Weathersfield Life, and, uh, I do have a comment regarding an article that has to do with, uh, Follybrook Boulevard. Not too long ago, I guess, uh, the posted speed limit on that road, it's 25 miles per hour. A dog was hit and killed. I guess, you know, if you're not a pet owner, I mean, you know, an animal gets hit, killed, it's, it's not much. If you are a pet owner, I think you, you realize more what it means. Dog has, has died. The posted speed is 25. People go 35, 40 miles per hour. When I read the article, I read it a couple times, and it seems that they compared Follybrook with Morrison Avenue, Twister Street, Park Avenue, and whatnot. And all of them have the same problems. Everybody's speeding. The police department says that basically it's accepted that people go 10 miles per hour more, and it's okay. 10 miles per hour more on a 25 mile zone, it's 40% of the speed. If there is, if there is a speed sign that says 25 miles per hour, there is a reason for that 25 miles per hour. If you accept it 10 miles per hour more, what does it mean? I think this, this is completely crazy. Why don't they do their job if you break the law? Get a ticket. I would like to, probably to, to be notified, or not notified, but be known from other people that when you go to Weathersfield, you have to drive slow. And on Follybrook, they were complaining because the cars, most of the cars come from Hartford, so they're used to break the law. But I think it's ridiculous, because I think they should do the job. They, they, they commented regarding, like, you know, put some speed bumps, some of this, some of that. Now, I would say, give the tickets. And, uh, of course, like, you know, Morrison Avenue came up, and I don't know if they were talking about Morrison Avenue or not, but the only thing Morrison Avenue needs to meet standards, which it doesn't meet it today. The only thing Morrison Avenue needs is a stop sign at the intersection of Tifton and Morrison Avenue. Because if something happens there, I'm gonna blame you guys. And let's not react. Let's be proactive. The reason this article is there is not because, I don't know, people were complaining, people going, you know, going too fast? No, it's because a little dog lost a life. So we are reacting instead of proactive. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak, Tom?
Tom Mazarello, 600 Walcott Hill Road. I, uh, attended a planning and zoning meeting on the 7th where an 8-24 hearing took place. I didn't know what 8-24 hearing was, but evidently, state statute requires that, uh, our Planning and Zoning Commission needs to approve a land purchase by a municipality. I was kind of, uh, surprised at the lack of definition in this, what I think is a pretty significant expenditure, $2.5 million roughly. And it seems that although the negotiations were, um, in executive session, so nobody outside of town council knew what was going on, um, there's not a lot of information out there to the public about what this all entails and, and, and what's the plan. And then in this, uh, planning and zoning meeting, uh, several questions were raised by commissioners about what, what exactly was gonna be done with the land. Well, evidently, we don't have enough ball fields, and, uh, Kathy, with her experience with Park and Rec, was able to elaborate on, uh, the, the demand or the need for more The, the parcels in question have some topography issues, some wetlands issues, some swamp issues. Uh, so when you look at 33 acres, you're not, you're not getting 33 acres of usable One commissioner asked if there was any kind of, uh, you know, sketch or idea or plan of, you know, how many fields or where they would go, or what we were gonna do with the land, and evidently, that hasn't been decided yet. It's still up in the air. It's just that we're gonna go out and we're gonna spend $2.5 million on some land, we're gonna use it for recreational activities, open space, or municipal use, which is a broad spectrum of what we're gonna do with it. And I think the public should be more informed about the specifics of it. Now, tonight, we've already set a meeting for a public hearing, and my question is, are, are we gonna have some presentation before, as part of the public hearing, uh, where we can learn what exactly is proposed, and how much money it's gonna cost us? And if it's a $2.5 million project, what's that effect gonna be to the taxpayers, once you figure in all the interest on, uh, bond money over 20 years, I assume? And further to that, what are you gonna do with the land? If you're gonna put fields, uh, recreation, uh, fields in there, how much money is that gonna cost? And is that gonna be part of the referendum question? Or are we just gonna say, do you want, like what was in the text tonight, do you wanna spend $2.5 million on, uh, land? To be determined at a future date what we're gonna do with the land? So I'm not necessarily opposed to buying land for a specific use, but I am opposed to spending $2.5 million for something we don't even know what's gonna happen with the land. A prior land purchase, we knew upfront that it was gonna be for passive use forever. That was it. We were getting a piece of land that you could go walk your dog on, or take a hike through the fields, or whatever. Nothing was ever gonna be built there. You couldn't use it for a recreation field, athletic field, so on. In this case, we don't really know. Maybe after we buy it, and we do all our survey work and design work, we find out, well, we can only put one soccer field and some parking spaces. Well, gee, don't you think the people should have been told that before they voted to spend $2.5 million for the land? I don't know how much for the financing, and another million dollars to improve the property. So, again, I think, uh, very little information out to the public. I, I hope that's not intentional, but here we have this big focus on, we gotta get this done, we gotta get it to, to the November ballot for referendum question, and I say, slow down, do your due diligence, figure out what you wanna do, present it to the public so that everybody understands exactly what the intent is, and then vote on it. And if it happens to be that it doesn't make the November election, so be it. So you have a referendum question in January, and yeah, it's gonna cost more money to do that, but it's, it's not, uh, outrageous. And, uh, I, I just think it's a huge purchase, and you're really doing yourself a disservice, because what's gonna happen is, there's gonna be a lot of misinformation spread around by people that are opposed to it. And I gotta say, unless I heard some, some facts, some solid plan of what was gonna be done, then I guess I would be on the, the, uh, team that would oppose the purchase, based on not knowing what we're buying. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak tonight?
Good evening. Robert Young, 20, Copper Mill Road. Now, where is the speaker for this? Where is the speaker for this? Is it comes out of here, or does it come out of the ceiling? Because it's pretty poor back there. Now, Tom was just up here to the podium, and I could hear every word he said. Mr. O'Neil and your, uh, Mr. Gregor, I don't know what they said. I had a real tough time trying to understand what they said. Because I really, I'm very interested in what Mr. O'Neil said about the budget deficit, but I'm not even gonna say a word about it tonight, because I'm gonna have to listen to it on television, or on my computer. And I, here I am, sitting right here, and I can't even hear it. So, where, where's the speaker? I mean, does it come from the ceiling, down? Is there a wire that goes through that sends out the, 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 the words? Or is it just, I don't know where? Anyway, I did wanna make that clear, that I couldn't understand what Mr. O'Neil said, nor could I understand what the engineer had said. But anyway, let's get on to, um, I'll, I'll talk a little bit about this other issue. Online, you, you, you post the minutes, and in the minutes, you put, uh, some kind of a meeting notes. You're all familiar with this, the meeting notes. And I'm reading the, reading, I'm looking at the notes, and it tells me whether every ordinance or whatever it was, it came up for discussion, how it was voted- whatever it was, it came up for discussion, how it was voted on, it passed, or whatever. But when we look at the motion number 10, and it talks about the, to approve the ordinance amending Chapter A-180, Town Council Rules and Procedures, seconded by Mr. Lesser, it says, "Vote. All councilors present, including the chairperson, voted A. The motion passed 9 to 0 to 0." But that's not true. It was amended. It changed. And this silly thing doesn't even mention, hey, guy, whoever's reading it, it changed. It passed, but it wasn't passed per what's in the agenda. Would you agree with me on that? What you had in the agenda changed. Yet this thing says it passed. But we all know it didn't pass. There were amendments made, and they passed.
And it says amended. Of course, I say amended. Says amended.
It says to approve the ordinance amending Chapter A-180, Town Council Rules and Procedures. No. No. It gives the reader the impression that the original agenda question passed, and that's not true. So I think you should look at that. The Keisha Farm. I look at that as the run-up. The run-up to the Keisha Farm was only two weeks ago? Three weeks ago? And here we are. It's just like the last town council meeting on July 19th. You came in with some ordinances. Right away, you came in, listened to the public, and voted. By the end of the day, by the end of the evening, it was all decided. There's a run-up that used to happen. I mentioned in 2004, there was discussion earlier, before the vote, before the meeting, meetings before, when it was mentioned that this was going to happen, and it didn't happen. And, I mean, it did happen, the meeting or two after they had it introduced. You should be introducing this stuff to give the public time. You're not doing that. With the Keisha Farm, you're not giving a notice. This, there should be a run-up before you get to the public hearing. There is, I think Tom spoke, about there should be information out there to everybody so they could make up their mind what they're going to do. And what do I do? When I don't have the information, I don't vote. I vote the other way. No, I don't vote for it. Just, I don't care. I'm not going into a deal that I don't know everything I need to know about. And that's where you're headed right now with the Keisha Farm. You're heading down the road to where people aren't going to have the information, and they're going to be forced to either say, well, I don't know all the answers, but I'm going to have to make a decision.
Okay, Mr. Young, your time's up.
And a lot of people like myself will just make a decision of no. Push it out. Let's keep talking about it, because the time is way too short. The run-up to this is very quick, and it should not be happening. This is an extreme lot of money.
Thank you.
Extreme what you're going to even do with the property, which you, it's like pie-in-the-sky stuff. You don't even know. You don't even have the money. And when we finally vote, and if it should pass, what will happen? And I think Tom mentioned, there'll be turf put on the fields, there'll be this put on the fields, there'll be sheds built, there'll be all kinds of things happening that the public will have no knowledge upfront when they went to vote.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
And that's how you run your business. Yes, ma'am, that's how you run your business. And you tell me, you're all for transparency. You're a joke, lady. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak tonight? Come on up.
George A. Rue, 956 Cloverdale Circle. I raised a couple of questions on the farm earlier, and the message that I'm hearing, and I hope you're hearing, it is caution. Caution. And that, I think, is warranted counsel, as vis a vis rushing through and doing something impetuously, okay? Caution. Another question, I just got a couple of brief comments that came up. I think it was one of our founding fathers say, tiny leaks in ships make them sink, or something along that line. I think that's the thrust of the comment. I may have the author wrong. And there was a little discussion tonight on $10,000 worth of chairs. I think it was chairs, right? We'll be talking about $10,000 in the conference room having to do with chairs?
Furniture for the conference room, yes.
Furniture, all right. There was a big incident in Washington recently. Some big mucky-muck wanted to spend a bazillion dollars on furniture in his office or something, caused a big flak. And I'm sitting there saying, what can be wrong with chairs? What are they, broken? They're falling apart? Or, I fail to understand or grasp how you can spend $10,000 on furniture that's perfectly functional. And you look in this room here, and somebody pointed out to me, said, gee, why don't you take the chairs out of here and bring them in there when they're not being used, and save $10,000? It's, I think, in government, it's a buck here, a buck there, that gets lost. And I think when someone, when our officials get up and just say, well, the truck has reached its extended life, it doesn't work anymore, my car's reached, gone past its extended life, it works great, and I'm planning to keep it, because I like the taxes that are associated there with, okay? So I think when you talk about, well, it's worn out, and, you know, it's something wrong, you got to be very, very specific, otherwise, to this taxpayer, and I pay my taxes, I'm not too worried about that, that's fine. I got one other quick question, and Derek talked about the salt shed, and I think he said the steel roof was going to cost a lot more, or something. Am I correct in that?
It's a can.
More or less. You can shake your head, you don't need to say yes or no.
It's some kind of, it's a can.
Yeah, it came, there was some cost increase. I thought he also said it had, it came from Canada, and I thought I heard him use the word tariffs. I thought I heard that, but I'm not certain. You know, this old man's hearing sometimes not so good, but I pay attention. Tariffs. Now, from whence cometh that? I want all of you to think about from whence cometh that. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. Do I have a motion to go into executive?
I just have, we have two, I had two communications from Bob Gaynor, 20 Orchard Hill Road. Both of them, he already sent them all to council, all the councils, so it is, both is, both are against information on the Keisha Farm purchase.
Okay.
One, his second one is for 96 lots for houses, a third acre, and selling them at $400,000 each.
Okay, thank you.
That's it.
Now, do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Motion to go into executive session.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Did you watch me do it?
No. I thought it was paper.